Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Clerk please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Any additions or changes to the seating's agenda? No, we'll move to our consent agenda. Just two items. We have approval of minutes from the September 10th meeting and approval of claims in the amount of $321,437.05.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Question. I kind of took issue with this part of the minutes that says to partner with Amherst Edition Economic Development Agreement because I guess I didn't feel like I was entering into an agreement and that's to me what this says. I thought we were just moving the process forward and we would have a formal agreement at some point in the future. So, am I the only one that thinks that or was I mistaken?
No, that's true. We actually have not signed the agreement yet. I'm drafting the agreement currently for you to review and to agree to an update. It was moved forward from Utility Subcommittee to Recommend to Council for $60,000 in economic development assistance for sewer service to the project.
So can we just change that wording to move it forward as you just stated?
Or to consider something, consider economic development agreement with?
That's exactly what the motion was though. I don't, I can't, I don't have it in front of me.
Partner?
Yeah, I had it written down to partner with.
Tony, mean it. So, Tony, do you recall your language on your?
I do not recall.
Motion that you made or you might, you probably just moved what city administrator had recommended at the time.
That's correct. We could probably play back that pack and watch it.
The discussion was over the increased amount that would be allotted to the project. That's the only thing that I recall about the, about the discussion and I, you know, calling it a partnership may be semantics.
Well, I just don't want to get caught in a situation in the future where it says, well, here are the, you know, minutes say you said you're partner with us when, that was not my understanding.
So what?
And that I just don't want it to, and it probably won't, but I don't want to get caught up in some legal something or other.
Until you actually have approved a contract though, you are not technically, it is, it is a game of semantics, but you are technically not involved in a contractual obligation or relationship.
Okay. I'll, I can buy that, I guess.
Yeah, unless, the only thing for clarifying language, if you wanted to say moving ahead with partnership.
Yeah.
With Amherst Edition Economic Development Department, moving ahead because that was the intention and as Kevin's pointing out, there is no contract signed at this point. That would be clarifying.
I would feel more comfortable with that if, if that would be okay.
Then take an amendment then to amend the language on the motion under the water sewer utility report from September 10th to read to move forward with a partnership with Amherst Edition Economic Development.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Second by Revolinsky.
You already have a motion for the contingent?
Pardon me?
You already have a motion for the contingent?
As amended. So if you, let's see, that would be Hamilton.
I would, I would move as amended.
Move as amended, okay.
And I'll second.
And second, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next council will move to our resolutions, actions and ordinances. We have a K-9 agreement for your approval. This is an agreement with Patrolman Colin Smith as our K-9 officer handler and the agreement, Chief, if you would mind commenting on?
I've got a typo in there. It's David Wall. It's David Wall.
Okay, I wondered about that.
Yeah. Colin Smith is the current K-9 handler. Bonjour, who is age is going to be retired. We're going to be soliciting funds to get a new K-9 dog. So it'll be called, or David Wall will be the new K-9 handler. It'll be a three-year contract under the Fair Labor Standards Act. He's entitled to compensation for handling the dog, training the dog, feeding the dog, and that's what the contract says. And that he will be financially liable for the training process.
So the current contract that we have that's in force right now will be nullified when David takes this training and takes this responsibility?
Once, yeah, the new dog is certified.
I would make a motion that we accept this with the change of, in the first paragraph, changing Colin Smith to David Wall.
Moved by Boyer.
I would second and also at the same time I would ask the chief to maybe just describe for us a little bit. I know that the dog that we have had was very useful over the years. Maybe you could just elaborate on that a little bit for the public, just so everybody knows the value of having a dog.
Bonjour, and the, the dog that we're going to get is a triple, has three purposes. One is to do narcotics identification. The second one is to do tracking. So if we have a burglar in the building, the dog will go and get it, or if a bad guy ran away from us, the dog will track. And then it's also an apprehension dog. The dog has gone down and fleeing felons, not in this county, but in other counties, not in the county, has tracked for over five miles and apprehended a suspect, an armed suspect. One of the big things that Bonjour did was he was called down to Van Buren County and located over 850 pounds of marijuana. So it was a significant marijuana bust down in Van Buren County.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Chief. And this is probably somewhere approaching 14 or 15 years since we've had a K-9 unit on the force, I believe.
Closer to, well, 17, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the K-9 agreement. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll be setting a public hearing for the rezoning of 107 West Hempstead Avenue. Kevin, if you give us some background on that, the rezoning request?
Yes, that was, we looked at that rezoning in our last planning meeting and so it was approved by the whole planning board without question. It's a zoning from, is it from a B-2 to an R-2, I think? For Rusty, I think it's B-2 to R-2. It's not in the minutes, but it's for Rusty Luckovich.
Okay.
Unanimously approved.
So we're just, we will be setting a public hearing on the rezoning, so we'll learn what our?
Yes, I'll have more information.
From too.
At that time, I should have put it in the minutes.
Scott, did you have a? It's from B-2 to R-2? Okay, thanks. So we'll set that for our next meeting, which would be October?
Give you a date.
Second Monday, October 8th. Entertain a motion to set October 8th's public hearing. Moved by Hallie, second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have several approvals for acceptance of projects that have been ongoing and the first one is the sanitary sewer project on Second Street. We have a letter from Melanie Carson of French Rennecor indicating that the project has been inspected and, and completed. Melanie?
Yes. On Second Street, there were three contracts for that project. The first contract was to K and N for the sanitary sewer work. The second contract was for the water job which the water department handled. And third is with Shipley for the paving. And for the council's information, paving will be happening on Second Street either today or tomorrow if the weather holds out, but it's warmed up, so it should work fine for them. But as far as the sewer construction, that contract is complete and I ask that you accept the project. But as I stated in my letter, asked that the retainage be held. They have had some issues with their subcontractors and bonding council and legally by holding the retainage, that, that's your responsibility, I guess, to hold that retainage until we get notice that those issues have been resolved. But it doesn't keep you from accepting the project and allowing the guarantee period to start or the warranty period.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Counsel, any other questions for Melanie regarding this project? Not entertain a motion to accept the recommendation?
Move to accept.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council, we are asking for your approval to accept the completion of the snow removal facilities project out at the Fairfield Municipal Airport. Again, we are receiving a letter from our, at the engineering firm of Crawford, Murphy and Tilly and their representative, Adam Ode as having completed the project for acceptance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Silvers. Was there discussion?
Oh, I was just going to say I can carry. Everything seems to be in order.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you.
Your honor, I would request that we move up the plan unit development code change ordinance consideration and look at the preliminary plat.
Okay, that's fine. So this will be the first reading of the planned unit development code change and I know that there was a planning zoning meeting just prior to this meeting, so Kevin, if you would report on that.
Yes, there was and everyone seemed to like the code as written. This is some language was borrowed from this code from a prior planned unit development code that I had a part in writing with RDG Consulting Firm out of Des Moines, I think everyone's familiar with. We have contracted with RDG before for several different reasons. It provides for, of course, more freedom and flexibility in development projects. The really, the only requirement or regulatory requirement, you might say, that I included in here was the fact that a planned unit development in our city would have to be three acres of property in order to actually be applicable to being a planned unit development. And, and that was about it. The rest of it is basically, oh, and one more significant change and that was that prior to this, your planned unit development code had Planning Board being the recommending board to the BOA. In this process, the difference would be that the Planning Board would be the recommending board to council and the council would be the approving authority of all planned unit developments, which of course brings electoral overview to this. And also, you know, the Planning Board technically is taking part in the planning of, of one of these unit developments, what they like, what they don't about the plans that have been proposed by the developer. And, you know, it's, it's also, department heads are taking part, the water and sewer departments, economic development, myself. So it's a, you know, it's a, a lot of involvement in bringing a finished staff project to, to council for approval. And the approval also includes a preliminary and final plat approval. So there's several public hearings to a process like this. It's, we hope it's, it's going to be something that's, it's a much more mature approach on a planning level to doing a planned unit development.
Kevin, can you talk a little about how this departs from our, our regular zoning approval for development and what, what are some of the flexibilities that you're talking about? What is it that, that we're actually doing and this is adding new language to the code?
Yes, it does. It takes away some language and it adds some new language. And what the difference is, is you have your, your zoning distinctions, R-1, R-2, R-3, B-1, B-2, that set up the zones that are included in your zoning code. Well, what a PUD is, is basically a, a planning overlay that isn't one of those districts, doesn't have the rules of those districts, has essentially no rules. Complete freedom of design and recommendation to council for preliminary and final plat approach. And what that gives you is complete flexibility for a piece of property. Now, there are different emphasis that may be the case and maybe it's green space preservation here, increasing the density and preserving some green space of a lot. Maybe it's that it's a three acre piece inside the city and, you know, the redevelopment of that piece of property is such that, you know, front setbacks are zero setbacks. Front setbacks are not going to be able to be very large or zero front or side setbacks will need to be the case. Nine times out of 10, the main thing you're looking at with a planned unit development proposal from a developer is lesser setbacks because I'm trying to get, you know, this development in here on this piece of property in a way that it works and the way that it makes the most sense, not only from a profit perspective, but also from a community perspective. There are no negative impacts on, you know, adjoining properties. Negative impacts on, you know, incompatible uses or, or development is the biggest worry that we have, of course. We have to protect the private property rights of all around us even as we develop, you know, any particular lot. Well, that's what we do in this process. And also, one, I will say that one addition the Planning Board wanted to see is the addition of a super majority being required for final approval on a preliminary and final plat level with council. Now, I had this in the, in the code I used before. The only reason I didn't include it in this one initially was that I had a five-member board there. And so four out of five was indeed a super majority. In our case, of course, four would be a, a simple majority. And we, we, as a group, I think, wished that we would rather see, and I probably shouldn't have put it in there like that, but a super majority of five out of seven members from council to finish the process for both preliminary plat approval and final plat approval. So that's basically what it does. It gives you complete freedom to engage in the planning process with a developer who has an innovative concept or idea to bring to you, to use a piece of infill property inside the city or in this case, particular case with Mr. Lavery, a piece on a peripheral area of the city, quite rural, negative impacts being quite easy in this case to avoid. We have no compatibility issues whatsoever. So that's basically, I would entertain any questions, but that's basically what we're looking at in this case.
I have a question. You said that this replaces some language and some is new?
Yes.
Which sections and what language is it replacing? This is just an all-new?
It's, it's some language from the code I had before and some language from our own code. Really, the parts that I took out from our own code were all the restrictions. There were many different restrictions that were similar to the other zoning distinctions in our code. The setbacks, the front setbacks in our PUD as it is written, I don't have my code book with me, but they are as restrictive, pretty much as restrictive as our R-1 designation was. And the side setbacks were large. The rear setbacks were 35 feet. I think the fronts were 25 feet. It didn't give the BOA any, number one, I don't feel like BOA as a quasi-judicial board should be involved in a planned unit development process. As I told the Planning Board this evening, the important thing about planned unit development, it is, it's not one size fits all. It's does this shoe fit, right? And any planned unit development can be denied for any rational reason. Has to be a rational reason. We don't feel like it would be good on this piece of property. Can we find another piece of property where we could do a development? Or we don't, we don't like the zero setback here. Can it be five feet or something like that? In this case, with Mr. Lavery's project, I think we increased the front setbacks by about five feet between our initial meetings, development meetings and our preliminary approval. So there were just, all I basically removed were the, were the, what I felt like were intense restrictions to an innovative approach to development.
Okay, so this, I think this is going to be replacement. Basically, you're removing and you're replacing.
It's replacement language, yes.
Okay.
Almost totally. But I did keep the, and it's important to note, the three acre limit has to be a three acre piece of property. I really like a two acre, but in this city it was a three acre. In this case, it was three acres and so we stuck with that, but we stuck with it for all genre, residential, commercial, mixed use.
I have a comment on that. First of all, I really like this ordinance and I like this idea and this is, makes me happy that we hired you because you're bringing some experience on this.
All right.
I just didn't say that publicly.
All right, round of applause, everybody.
But what I want to say is, yeah, why, you know, the idea, if we're offering flexibility, but then suddenly three acres within the city, that's quite a large tract of land.
It is.
You said, oh, you wouldn't, you personally, you were saying you liked two acres. In other words, why, why three acres? Why not two acres? Why not make it a little, if we're trying to give flexibility to developers, why are we limiting it to such big parcels of land? Why don't we make it two acres?
Why don't we? I would agree. I would agree. I, I stuck with that because it was in the, the code existing and I felt like I was kind of changing the world here and I didn't want to, I didn't want to seem like I was moving completely away from what the city had done for so long, but I, I would make it an acre and a half. I would make it two acres, definitely. It will be more applicable to infill within the city if it be removed to an acre or two acres, acre and a half.
Even an acre.
Even an acre. I mean, a city lot is a lot less than an acre, but I, you know, two acres, I would say, acre and a half, acre and a half for sure.
I mean, I, you know.
I don't see why you couldn't because that brings the possibility of infill mixed use. Because on an infill mixed use project, you're going to see a mixture of a CBD type idea with the front, the commercial front will be zero front setback. And then the residential rear maybe on that would be a little, you know, maybe multifamily, like an R4 approach with a little bit of a front setback, allowing for the sidewalk and everything, the continuity of pedestrian thoroughfare. So, yeah, I think you could do it on an acre and a half with a focus of infill in mind, but on a rural level, it's usually going to be bigger lot consideration.
It would be anyway, so.
But no, I like the, where you're headed with that, yeah.
Well.
Planning was a recommendation to you. You can make changes that you wish to see.
So this is coming, recommended for planning and zoning with the amended language about a super majority or five of the seven council members approving. Are you interested in making an amendment, John?
Yes, I am. And I would, I would change it three acres to acre and a half.
To one and, to one and a half.
Right, one and a half acres instead of three.
So I'll take that as a motion to approve with those amendments.
I'll second.
Second by Hallie. Discussion on the size of the acreage?
I, I have a question because it's not, and maybe it's just Monday and it's not clicking, but I, I guess I don't understand, are we doing this just to be innovative and creative and trying to spur economic development? Or are we doing it to get around the other zoning that we have in place? Because I just remember all of these intense discussions we had a year or two ago about lot size and, and that kind of thing. And I'm thinking to myself, are we, does this make sense?
Well, typically the PUD is, it's your cutoff. It's your font. It's what allows you to move into a more flexible category with any particular developer or piece of property that a developer is looking at. And it's, it is, it's a pressure relief valve, yeah, because I think in many cases, zoning codes, I mean, our, our own zoning code in my, purely in my personal opinion, is somewhat antiquated, ancient and restrictive, maybe over restrictive. I think it's, I think it's compatible, combats itself in some instances. I mean, when you have a zoning code that says the biggest fence you can have in a front yard is three feet, clearly that, that, that code is from a time when people made their fence picket by picket because now you go and buy fours, sixes, eights and twelves. You can't buy a three foot. You'd have to buy a four foot piece of fence and cut it because a lot of people, you know, build fences in sections. It's built, in 1982, that wasn't the case, although a hand-built picket fence is quite attractive and three feet is a nice size for a fence, but you should be allowed up to four. That's almost the entire nation at this point. Our code is not immature and modern and I think a zoning code prepared for the type of development and the kind of development we need to be looking at in the future. I'll be bringing forth the recommendation to consider doing a new zoning code with a consultant at some point in the future. I, I just, I don't want to scare the heck out of anybody, but I think that, that's a good consideration for us to make.
I would, Susan, I would just say that this is, everything is going to go through the planning and zoning and the public hearing process anyway. This gives the kind of flexibility for higher density development. And I, I think that's what our, our code probably doesn't allow for at this point in time.
True.
But if it's going in an area where it's not wanted and not desired, then that'll come through the, the public hearing process and it'll, and it'll eventually come to the council as well. But it is, my understanding always was that it gave you the flexibility to do higher density within, within a more restrictive zoning context.
Yes, saving green space in some cases and allowing for a more, you know, a more applicable build out to an inner-city lot that's being repurposed, for instance, because I do want to do a mixed use with zero setback here and then maybe an R-2 or 3 in the back. So it, it allows you to do approaches that are a little more workable with any particular project, piece of, piece of property or project.
And it does incentivize, as, as you mentioned.
Yes.
Initially as well. This is our first reading, go ahead.
Well, these are national trends in terms of infill development, anti-sprawl, mixed use, green space preservation. So this is, this is nothing we're inventing. This is kind of the new standard in codes. And from my understanding, our codes are from the 70s.
This one in particular, 1982.
Okay, so they're a little antiquated.
Still the 70s technically.
Early 70s, early, late 70s. The late 70s.
I think the 70s were actually over with the arrival of Madonna, 1984.
Only in a paint.
We do, we do have a preliminary plat for consideration that is only possible with the passage of, not that I'm putting any pressure on anybody. We can table that, but if we did do it in one reading, it would be effective. And as I said, this is, this is only one piece of your, and you, you're going to, there's four, four reviews of anything that will be passed with this code.
All right, so just to be clear, Kevin, this is first reading, but you're, are you asking or recommending that the council consider passing this in one reading simply because we have a project that is, that's coming up? We want to move forward?
That's right. I would request a waiving of the second and third reading simply because there is a preliminary plat on this agenda that depends on the passage of this thing. We could table that though, if, if there would like to be a second or third reading, but although it seems very revolutionary, this PUD change, it's really, in the sense that there's so many approvals necessary, it's really not. And you, you, this is something quite, again, quite common, but.
I guess I would prefer to at least have a second reading, you know, since this is, this is the first one. I'll let the community see it and comment on it if they want. And so for my clarification, we're going to change it from, the, the motion is to change it from three acres to one and a half and also to add the super majority from five to seven.
Yes.
Five of seven members voting yes, which I think is, is a good addition as well.
So there is no motion to suspend the rules. We'll just take our original motion to pass the first reading of this ordinance to the second.
Could I just ask the developer, I mean, is there, you know, I, our city administrator had asked us to hurry to, you know, suspend our rules in order to accommodate you. Is this, does this put a big damper on your plans to wait another two weeks?
No, we're fine. I, it's, you know, I'd like to be passed the first reading tonight.
Yeah, so you know that we're?
Sure.
Yeah.
I know to where I'm going with the project.
Sure. But it doesn't mean that you won't do the project or something.
No, no, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, that's, it's moving. All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other session, discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next then, the resolution accepting the preliminary plat of the Amherst subdivision, is that something that you would?
I would recommend tabling that, your honor.
Okay. We'll motion to table that.
Move to table.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council will have the reading of our ordinance changing to touchpad meters and creating a new policy. I think I would ask at this time Darren Hamilton, as Chair of the Water Sewer Utilities Committee, to report on the discussions within your committee and what's being brought before the council.
All right. Our committee met on the 19th and we had a recommendation from our water superintendent, Carl Chandler, to move away from the opt-out program. And the committee felt that it would be prudent to do that. Some of the, some of the major reasons that I heard Carl talk about was is that morale in the department had been extremely low at times because of this opt-out program. And it would help bring that up. It would also kind of ease some tensions between the community. There's definitely a split between two different groups over this issue. So I have submitted a revised Chapter 14, Section 4, Point 170 for your first reading consideration. And we're going to strike the effective date of what that ordinance was and change it to October 23rd of 2012, remove language referring to remote reading device to touchpad read device and strike all language referring to the. And strike all language referring to the voluntary opt-out requirements as per Section 1404.170, Items 1, or Items 4 and 5. I, I wrote in a little synopsis in red down here at the bottom, it's not part of this ordinance, that the purpose of the changes is to remove the language referring to the meter opt-out program and the type of meter to be installed from hereforward by the City Water Department. Water Superintendent Carl Chandler advised the Utility Committee of the City Council on 9/19/12 that it was his wish to continue the radio read removal program as requested on an as-requested basis, which would be if a customer requests to have a radio read meter removed from the home, then the department would do that. On this basis, with no fees for the customer, and then refund is given to the customers charged as described in the ordinance. Okay, previously, we described that charges would be a minimum of one-half hour per person out on site and then $10 a month. And the refund would be done as credits back to the water bill through the water office. And currently, there is 40 people that we're talking about with this. Carl is the, since the refunds aren't part of the ordinance, would that be effective? When, when would that be effective?
I'd have to guess once it made through whatever readings and then it became the ordinance again.
Well, the, there was never, there is no language that I felt needed to be put in here about the refund of anything back to a customer as far as part of the ordinance. And it would become a policy of your department and you, as the department head, would have to set that policy as to when that would take place. But as far as switching out a meter for a touchpad, I would think that that would have to wait until the effective date of this ordinance.
Yeah, I think.
I think that's what he meant, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
That'd probably be a good idea, just as soon as it got all the way through the council, all through meetings, then everything would be legitimate. And some folks I've talked to on the phone, I just mentioned to them that wait till after tonight, we'll know more and this kind of thing. So if you just may be putting it off for a couple more weeks, if they wanted to change out, then it would be no fee or no armor file, no refund. And the women in the office told anyone that's opting out now, not to send any billing for the labor or to add money to $10 on it until this is settled. And that way, that would eliminate additional credits that would go down to the issue.
Okay. So I would, I would move this ordinance from the first to the second reading.
Okay, motion by Hamilton to approve the new policy towards touch, touchpad meters.
I'll second it, but I have some comments.
Seconded by Silver's. Yes, we're going to open this up to a public hearing as well. So, go ahead.
Well, Darren, I think made two of the three points about making this change. The third one is, although it's in its very infancy stages, I think the thing that resonated with me the most was the discussions and the research that are ongoing about other possibilities about how to handle the situation rather than the remote read meter. So that really, in my mind, was the biggest reason why we made this, this switch. And then the other question that I had was the $15? The customer's charge for installation shall be $15? Can you clarify that for me?
Um, let me see.
That is in Section B on the first page. All customers shall be required to have a touchpad read device installed and serviced through meter. The customer's charge for installation shall be $15.
I believe that's been in our ordinance for many years. Carl?
I think that's carryover and it must have got, this. An action be strict.
Okay.
Between now and the second reading.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make that an amendment to my proposal. And then, and then I'll have that change available for us to read at the next reading.
Okay. And I think this, this change is, is, you know, just shows that the city is willing to be flexible and look at other options and, you know, make sure that we're doing the best for the city. And I, I think that should be noted.
Thanks. And I'll add to that, too, that part of the conversations that, that we had with Carl, I think it was, it was really his department that kind of rallied around the idea of it wouldn't be the end of the world if we were just reading touch meters, touchpad meters as well, and that they were comfortable going to that at this stage while we look into, you know, other, other options that would be adding the efficiency that we wanted to get from the radio frequency meters. So getting back to that, but we really applaud you and appreciate the flexibility of your department and also the willingness to work with your customers in this, you know, very magnanimous way. So I'd open it up to public comment at this time?
Oh, Jennifer Donnigan. I, I know I speak for many people here who would very much like to thank Carl, first of all, and also Kevin Flanagan, the City Councilman there, for this change in your plan to the water meters. I think it truly does show your responsiveness to the citizens and your flexibility, and it's very admirable. I don't know how many other cities really are as responsive as the City Council is. So thank you. And also, I'd just like to add also that this change does make sense in preparation for the future for hopefully fiber optic system. It will bring not only safer meters, but more efficient meters and more cost-effective system. And I think that once, hopefully, we have that fiber optic system in place, I think other cities in the aisle are going to be jealous of us. So I'd just really like to thank you again. Your decision shows that you are trying to do the right thing, and many people appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Can I respond briefly? Thank you, Jennifer. I, I just want to respond and if you could pass this along to the other members of the Safe Meter Coalition.
Sure.
When we were putting this ordinance together initially, and there was quite a bit of negativity unnecessarily pushed on us council members, I remember saying, okay, this isn't a perfect system, but we're going to take a look at it. We're going to see how it works in the next few months and we can come back. Nothing's set in stone. So here we are, amending it after 40 people signed in, which was a low number, which is partly why I think the fee is being waived, it's just it's not worth it, so few people. But the message is simply that the heavy-handedness that went along with this issue was completely unnecessary from the side of people who were against the meters. Our council is committed, has always been committed to, to protecting the safety of our citizens and would not knowingly put a device in people's homes that was harmful. At the same time, we are sensitive to the needs of our citizens and want to do something that is, can make everyone happy. So as far as the wireless meters go, you have something there that a portion of the community doesn't feel comfortable with. And the touchpad, you could say the entire community is comfortable with those. So Carl, I talked to this morning, part of what he did this for was to unify the community to end this divisiveness, and I commend him for that. And something he said, I want to restate, I thought it was worth stating, he said, we're all in this together. So in the future, if another issue comes up, I really hope the citizens of Fairfield will try to work with the city and not take on a us-against-them mentality and just let the process unfold as it has so that we can all come to a conclusion that I think now we're pretty much all pretty happy with.
Very well said.
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we have a motion, a second, to pass from the first to the second reading. Any other discussion? Not please call a roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Silver's?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. The next council, in my report, I have two board appointments for your approval. One will be to the Beautification Commission, Lou Bolster, and he would be filling the position that Theresa Chetel had served in for several years. The other is Corey Madison from, and this is one of my appointments to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, is a member of the Merrick Inn. He would be replacing June Lowenberg. So entertain a motion to approve Lou Bolster and Corey Madison.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie, seconded by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our committee reports. Yes?
Your Honor, John was going to give a short update under his report for their revitalization plan.
Sure, John. So we'll move to our city attorney report. John?
We hit a snag on the October 22nd hearing we're going to have on the revitalization plan. We had good cooperation from City Hall and a lot of work on stuff in 4,300 envelopes, went out to all our water users. We found out that we have a glitch on our ownership title and deed list that we got from the courthouse and cannot interface the two lists the way we wanted to and do some sorting. We had Computer Solutions work with this last week and we literally came up short on getting to a deadline. We needed to have all notices out by last Friday and it couldn't be done. Talked with our finance council at Ailer's Firm in Des Moines, and they think the only thing we can do is set a different date. We'll have to put some block ads in paper and go through this again with the water department, but they suggest we do our total ownership after we get our list corrected from the courthouse. We found out in going into the list that things like who is on there as an owner with a title and is being taxed isn't necessarily accurate anymore. For instance, in my own building, I discovered that people I had as tenants 10 years ago that had large machines that produced booklets for computer directions of insurance companies under the old machinery, equipment and inventory tax that they used to impose on people. Some of those are still listed as owners and addresses that they haven't been at for a while. So those have to be weeded. There are some other things that we're going back on the list about that appear to be maybe inaccuracies, too. The courthouse, I don't think realized it, and I don't think the assessor's office realized it as far as a few of those things still being in there, but it only takes one to screw up our notice. So we're correcting that. We're going to go back. I need to straw poll the council as far as whether you would rather have a hearing on this November 26th or at your one meeting in December. And I'm guessing that probably those Christmas bells are going to be more important than having a hearing on revitalization plan in December. But we can get the notice done at either period, but we have to have a clean 30 days. We have to, the way it looks, do a larger notice that we're anticipating on owners, and then we'll do the same thing through the water department again if they'll have. So that's where we're at.
Whatever timeline you recommend, that seems fine.
We can either do it November 26th, we'd be getting our 30-day notice in by the end of October, or we can do it at the December meeting and we'll still meet our timeline before February 1 of 2013 when a new abatement year is effective.
Well, doing it earlier may give anyone who wants to come to the meeting, I mean, the later in the year, the more likely we have weather problem with coming to the meeting or something, so maybe we should do it earlier for that reason.
And you're, you're not asking us to approve a date tonight, are you, John?
No, we'll have a resolution back in October.
Okay, I think it's fine, just bring it to us as quickly as possible. It's fine.
Is that the straw poll pretty much?
Yeah.
November 26th.
Yes, November 26th.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next, for our committee reports, Watersuit Utilities, we have two appeals before the council today regarding some excessive water bills. And first, I think we're going to hear from is Vicki Alexander-Harriet. Come on forward. Are you going to basically tell your story of what had happened, or should I have Kevin give a little bit of, a little background?
I'd like to summarize it first.
Sure, that's fine.
And then Kevin can confirm. May I give a handoff to?
Sure. Pass it to the chief and chief will pass it down.
Thank you very much. So you've probably heard about the fellow who had the $7,000 water bill. That's us. And we'd like, we know you've got very important things to discuss. We'll try to keep the treatment of this question brief. I'd like to start first by explaining what we're not here for so that we can focus attention on the main issue at hand. We're not here with any concern about repairing of a water leak. The repair's been done, we paid for that, that's our responsibility. The $7,000 water bill for the month of July came in two parts, as you know, a sewer portion and a water portion. We're not really here to talk about the sewer portion either because that has been very adequately treated by the water department. And in order best to understand the water issue, let me explain how we resolved the sewer issue. As everyone knows, a sewage effluent is not metered, there's a single water meter, and we have the assumption for a home that all the water is going out through the sewer, and so the sewer charge applies to the used water. But the city does employ what I call a usage principle, that the sewage, usage of the sewage is what should determine the bill. For example, there are residents who have two meters in their homes, one for the home and one for lawn and garden, and the lawn and garden is made in such a way that no water would go through the sewer, and there is, for that reason, no sewage charge on such a meter. So I call that the usage principle, that the sewer charge is based upon usage. That principle gets applied now and then in unusual situations like an accident or a leakage, where there is a substantial leakage and it's demonstrated that the leak did not pass through the sewer system. In cases like that, and there have been enough to establish a precedent, precedence within the water department, that the water department then has the authority to commute the apparent fee on the meter, we're talking about a single home meter now, to reflect the usage of the sewer. The portion of the leak or accident that didn't go through the sewer is adjusted. And when Vicki and I met with the water department, with Carl and Barbara and Kevin, they applied that principle and offered to reduce the sewer charge on our July bill to reflect what would have been an average sewage usage during the month. And we believe that that was a correct application of the usage principle and correct following of established precedent. We have no objection with that treatment. Where we would like to raise a question is about the treatment of the water. And the water, the resolution of the water question comes down by a very different logic. It is a logic of fault and responsibility for the leaked water. To understand this, let's go through the basic facts and sort of timeline of what happened. And you've got the fact list in front of you. I'm not going to read it all, I'm going to get the high points. On a Saturday morning, we tried to take a shower and found very low water pressure, July 14th. The water pressure was about half to a third of normal, so we went down to the basement, looked for leaked water there, there was nothing. Looked around the yard, didn't see any evidence of a leak. So we suspected. So we suspected blockage in the pipes. We have a whole house water filter system. We brought the whole house, the water filter guy in. He disconnected the filter. The leak, the low pressure was still evident. So it wasn't evidently a part of our water filtration system. That being the weekend, we waited until, oh, oh yeah. We asked our neighbors if they had been experiencing any problem and none of the neighbors had had a problem with low water pressure. So on Monday morning, Vicki called the city and asked them, the Water Department, if there had been a general loss of water pressure in the neighborhood. And a female clerk told her that there was no such problem. Independently, because we were kind of anxious about this, I called the city. And I spoke to a female clerk, reported the low water pressure. And she was very helpful. This was in the Water Department. She said, have you checked your basement? I said, yes. Have you checked your lawn? I said, any squishy spots, any green patches? Because this was in the middle of the drought. I said, nothing. And so I asked if the city could send someone out to read the meter. Because that way we could distinguish between the blockage theory of the problem and the leakage theory. And the clerk responded by saying that the city does not send meter readers on special requests. And that the next reading of the meter would be around the 1st of August. But she gave me the serial number of the meter and told me to look for a meter pit and stick. And I could, she also gave me the recent meter reading to allow me to read it on my own. And I looked all around my property and I couldn't find anything resembling the description of a meter pit and stick. I found a cylindrical well on a neighbor's property with what looked like a water pump in it, but there was no evidence of dials on it. And so I called the city again and spoke to a second clerk. She had not heard my story before, so I explained it again to her. And said, could you send someone to please show me where my meter pit is so that I can read the meter and determine the cause of the problem? She said that they don't send staff out to help in that way. She recommended I call a private contractor to read the meter. Now, when we had our hearing last Wednesday with the Water Subcommittee, Kevin explained that it is the policy of the Water Department to respond to requests such as ours. And that both clerks had made a mistake in not responding. Either by sending someone out to read the meter or by sending someone to help us find the meter pit. And then Carl elaborated on that during our Wednesday meeting. And he explained that if he had been asked to go out there and read the meter, he would have done so. He would have pulled the meter up. He would have found the dials spinning, showing a substantial flow of water. And that he then would have offered to stop the flow by switching the valve on the water meter if the homeowner had requested it, which no doubt a homeowner would. So the point there is that the city clerks, for one reason or another, did not follow the established policy and procedure of the Water Department. As it happened, Vicki and I had to leave town the next day. We had foreign house guests. They were willing to live with dribbling showers for two weeks. And so we left town and we came back. Two weeks later, the low pressure was still in evidence. And at that point then, I called a private meter reader, a contractor, to come out and read the meter for me. And we searched all around the yard, couldn't find a meter pit. But when we checked the one that I had seen before, he pulled it up. He wiped a lot of silt off of the glass plate. And there were the meter, there were the dials, and they were spinning like crazy. And he said, oh, you've got a real problem here. At which point he switched off the valve and shut the flow, just as Carl would have done, have done two weeks before Carl had been called. So what, you know, the consequence of that, of the entire problem was a release of about 650,000 gallons of water. And the water meter bill itself, the water portion was about $3,200, a very substantial leak. What Vicki and I would like to put forth is an allocation of responsibility for this leak. That we accept responsibility for the Saturday, Sunday and Monday in which the leak had occurred, what we later found out to be a leak, by the way. The end of the story is, I finally, I called a contractor. Once we knew that the problem was a leakage, the contractor excavated, found that the valve down at the bottom of the meter pit had corroded and was 18 inches away from a storm drain. And the water had forced its way into, you know, one of these plastic storm drain tiles and had gone underground for 80 yards, 80 to 100 yards, over to a tributary of Crow Creek. And it exited there, a very long way away from our house. Not something that any of us would have seen in the normal course of, you know, our life. So, so there was this, that's where all the water had been going. And that's why it wasn't in our basement or on our lawn. Vicki and I believe that we are responsible for the first three days of this leak. But once the city clerks had been notified of this and by not following the established policy and procedure of the department, which would have presented the release of another 500,000 gallons, we ask that the city assume responsibility for what was the last 15 days of the leak.
But we also recognize that once we found out what the problem was, then we're taking care of.
From August 1st onwards, we are paying the whole meter charge because we were aware and we were in control of the situation at that point.
And we actually have to do that.
Yeah.
You know, it's one of these things that with hindsight, we, you know, I'm glad that Ashley's story was received as much publicity as it has because we had no idea. And everyone we talked to gave us no suggestion that this could possibly be one of the options. That there could have been a corroded pipe and that we should immediately go look and see. We did, the city did recommend that we call a plumber and we did call the plumber. And plumber's response was, is there water in your basement? Is there water in your yard? Just as the city clerk's response had been. And we said, no. And they said, well, it doesn't sound like you have a leak. So, because there was no leak, you know, in evidence. And so, you know, clearly in hindsight, now we can say, yeah, well, but obviously there was something. We thought, being novices in the water trouble world, that maybe we had some kind of root blockage or something that was causing the change in the pressure. It didn't ever occur to us that it really was a leak because we couldn't see any evidence of it anywhere. So that's, you know, we, we went away thinking we had something to deal with when we came back. But it was probably going to be excavating something to find out why the water pressure was low. Not that there was a leak that we were leaving behind. So that's, that's.
Counsel, any thoughts? You know, having reviewed this with Kevin, and I understand the logic of what you're presenting. I'd be pretty mad at my plumber too. You know, I don't know how, I don't know how often you use this plumber or if he helped build your house or something, but.
We don't want, we actually really feel the opposite of that. We don't really feel it's the plumber's fault.
No, it's.
We asked the plumber. But the first line of defense should have been when we asked the city who gives our meter routinely to read the meter.
Well, the thing is, let me, let me just finish the point. The only, the only point about that is that the very basics of the relationship between the city and a property owner are that, you know, if, that essentially you're responsible for checking all possible, you know, leakage from your side of the meter to the house. And you attempted to do that by calling your plumber and he didn't come. It just.
But we first attempted to do it by asking the city to show us where the meter was.
And if I can say, let's not use the word plumber here. Let's use the word meter reader. Because when the contractor did come out, that's all he did. He located the pit, wiped off the silt, read the meter and turned the cock exactly the way Carl would have done. In other words, I was paying a private contractor to do the work that Carl would have done under policy and procedure from the Water Department.
I'm just making, I'm just making the point. It's, I'm just.
That's the meanest accurate statement.
I'm just making the point that it was unfortunate that he didn't respond. That's all. I'm not saying that there's fault that lies anywhere. I'm saying it's unfortunate, it's as unfortunate as maybe the advice you were given. I think that's.
Certainly if you had come out, then.
Right. So the discussion in committee and the recommendation.
The recommendation of the committee was that there was an adequate relief given by forgiving the sewer usage off of the bill and reducing it by almost $5,000?
Yes, if I may, your honor. The original bill was actually, you know, you know, the tough thing. The tough thing about talking about almost perfect employees. There's one tough thing about, usually when you talk about them, you're talking about when they're almost perfect, aren't you? When they may be deemed to have made some mistake. But there could be, there shouldn't be, there can be, anything more compelling than a citizen in a city hearing a city utility employee say, I think you need to call a plumber. Because in doing so, they're admitting that they are realizing that the scope and the capacity of the problem that they feel like you may have is greater than they are aware that our employees can offer you assistance with. And I would, that's the one thing I think we need to really realize about this. I don't want to even say that, that our employees made a mistake. I think they misspoke is what I think happened. But I do know that the best advice that they felt that they could humanly give was given as soon as they felt like they could give it. The original bill was 84.92, $8,492.92. The bill presented had average sewer billing for August of $50 and for September, the two months in question, at $50. So that was, the extended bill was $3,628.43. Almost a $5,000 reduction. So, and we are actually looking into some solid waste. I think, you know, billing involved with that too, solid waste service billing. They're still looking into that. But, so I mean, $5,000 worth of sewer was removed. And that is as far as I felt that I could go. And then, and then, of course, we ended up in the subcommittee meeting. Now, in the subcommittee meeting, I will also stress that the time given, we had given a year, which is what we felt we could do. Subcommittee extended that recommendation to council as a two-year term of payback on that bill. But of course, we are entirely, staff entirely at the pleasure of council. You know, whether or not that bill needs to be, you know, further alleviated because of, I don't feel culpability, but because of certainly an extenuating circumstance involved here. But I do not feel that it is, it is pointing to any culpability because that line is a, is a private line when it leaves that, that main. I think, you know, that respect for the difference between the private and the public, I think is what led to the misstatement. And I do apologize for that. I apologize to the Harriets and I, I apologize for that to council. But I don't feel like it would, could even be deemed a mistake.
This is an extraordinary amount of money. There's no question about it. It shouldn't be taken lightly. And I understand the, the areas of policy and precedent that are involved here. You know, we understand our policy probably better than our citizens do, and I get that. But there's a, and there is a precedent if you go beyond what's recommended for the sewer. But we don't face these kinds of situations very often. I think it is an extenuating circumstance.
I would like to just test the memory of the council or those who've been on for a while. About, excuse me, about five or six years ago or maybe more, I remember a similar situation for a much lower amount. I think it was more like $700, $800, should we call it, Darren?
I do. I brought that up at the meeting.
Did you? How do we handle that?
We forgave the sewer, but we still charged for the water.
Is that what we did with them?
We did with them.
I see.
See, that makes sense if you consider the Water Department doesn't have any sort of special funding. It's funded by the cost of purifying and delivering water. So if you're asking for this to be forgiven, you're asking all the other customers to pay it because that water was purified and delivered. It just got dumped in the, in the ground. So there's no extra fund that the Water Department has, right, Carl? That covers this kind of stuff? So it's, you're asking us to make the decision to, what, charge everybody for this mistake?
But Michael, that line of reasoning doesn't really go that far because there's, most of our water, water expenses in the Water Department are fixed costs. In other words, we don't.
Except for, except for the cost of.
Electricity.
So each gallon costs the same.
We don't produce the water, God produces the water.
Actually, the water is processed by us.
Processed.
The mechanics and the manpower, the electricity and the equipment are all part of processing the water, which is an expense, which in turn comes back to the end user.
Yeah.
And that's how the system works.
Each gallon costs the same whether it's used or leaked.
Right.
It's the same cost to purify that, pull it out of the Jordan well, purify it, deliver it to the house. So there's no extra fund available besides everyone else's water bill to cover this.
But when you look at really what the money pays for is the infrastructure that's already in place, whether or not you pump a million gallons or 2 million gallons that month.
No, I think it's per gallon, isn't it, Carl? Isn't it?
Well, you can certainly average it out per gallon, but there's a certain amount of infrastructure. Of course, the electricity, yeah, that's an additional cost to actually pump. But we don't have to install any extra pumps to, to, to pump the water that got into Crow Creek and Harriet's yard. We didn't, you know, we already had the, we already had the water tower. That's where our, our water bill goes to pay for all the infrastructure that we all own. So when you say, well, everybody's got to bear the expense of it. Well, it's just simply the electricity was the additional amount over the fixed costs that we already, that we already have, no matter if we pump half a million for the whole city that day or 2 million for the city that day.
I think you and I have different views of how business works. But I think the water itself has a value and it was lost. And I don't know if there's a reduced fee or whatever, but somebody has to pay for the water. And it was a real bummer that your plumber made an assessment on the phone. I mean, that's, I think we can agree that's not.
I really, I'm sorry. I hate to kind of belabor this point, but yes, I really, I'm completely with you. I wish the plumber had said, maybe I'd better come and see what's going on. But the first thing he did was call the city who gives us the water and asked for help to find our meter. If that had happened, the first thing we asked, three times, if that had happened, we would have known what to do and we would have turned it off. So we can throw it back on the plumber and, and I, everyone has been so kind with us. I hate to be standing up here being some kind of a squeaky wheel. But I do feel that there was a precedent that, and a policy that wasn't followed. And when that happened, you know, legally, it's negligent if people have a policy that they don't follow. And I know that the city does this because my neighbor just had a problem and the city was there in half an hour. They had somebody there trying to help them sort out what the problem was with their meter. So it's not that it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen. And for some reason, I think partly because everyone had the same response. There's no water in your basement, there's no water in your yard. Doesn't sound like a leak to anybody. And so maybe that's why they didn't think it was worth sending somebody out to help them. I don't know.
Your honor, I concede that point. I do.
Thank you. And I wish the plumber had come. But anyway, so there we are. I guess we're throwing.
I would just, so, just to kind of try and move this along. Their proposal is a reduction of 15 days of the 18 days that this leak took place. And if there's any culpability on the side of the city for bad advice, that's, that's the issue as to whether that's worth negotiating some, some reduction based on how many days of lost water. I'm not making a recommendation one way or the other, but I'm just saying that is there. a wish within the council to consider a further reduction based on that?
Well, I think the tough thing, and we talked about this at the, the committee meeting, is it's a judgment call. And whatever judgment we make, you know, it's kind of like you have consequences to this side and consequences to that side, and we're setting a precedence. And what, you know, thirty-six hundred dollars to you might be really, I'm sure is, you know, a burden for you, but for the little old lady down the street who has something very similar, a two-hundred-dollar bill to her could mean the same, you know, the same hardship for her. So that's the part I'm struggling with. I'm taking out the, the liability and the culpability, because I don't believe it exists. I mean, in my opinion, yes, we misspoke, but I think as being a property owner, it's your responsibility to know where the meter is before you think you have a problem, not after the fact. Do I know where mine is? I have a pretty good idea, and I know where the shut-off is. And if I needed it, you know, I'd yell at my husband, "Come on, come on." But, you know, sorry, Scott, I didn't mean that against you. But, so I think that's what we're all struggling with here is, is the judgment. So whatever decision we make, there's, you know, it's setting precedents, and that's a tough one.
I, I, you know, as, as a lawyer, I'm very sensitive to the issue present, which I understand it very well. But I think that we all learn a lesson from this. I would be very surprised if anyone else who calls the city and asks for someone to come and help with their meter, that they didn't get somebody out there. I'm, I'm, I hope if nothing else, this happens. And I, and I'm pretty sure probably, well, I'm sure the ladies feel terrible that they didn't help us, and when they got that bill coming out and they saw how much money it was, I'm sure everyone thought, well, this is, you know, well, I know when we called this, "Oh, you guys can set me thousands of dollars in water bill." So I, I know that, I, I don't think it will happen again, because I think people are now aware, and certainly anyone who comes near us will certainly tell them that they should be sure and find out where their water pit is, and, and know that they should know that, and you're right. We, it never occurred to us that, you know, when we built the house, it was part of all the other things that were put in. It never occurred to me that we didn't know where it was until we had to try and find it.
Your Honor, if I may, I, there will, I mean, treating similarly situated, you know, cases in a similar manner is an important part of what we do. Acting on a rational basis is an important part of what we do. From the interest of any perceived culpability, perceived, you know, maybe we, maybe we say, you know, three thousand dollars. We, we pull off another six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-three, and we say three thousand dollars square. I have been running scenarios with employees. I think Carl's talked to employees, and, you know, we just, we're just talking about how, you know, we approach on, on a response level to some of the calls and things, and I think it's, it's an important thing that we do that. And, but again, it's, it's, you're always talking about, you know, almost perfect employees when they're almost perfect. And believe me, that's what we've got in City Hall. They do a great job, and they're just, you know, slammed every day, day in and out. It's a busy, busy place. But in the interest of this very particular, I think what is a very particular situation, I would suggest that.
Again, everyone is extremely kind to us. We have no complaint with the treatment we've gotten from anybody, with Kevin and Ben Kelly, who are kind and compassionate and positive.
Thank you.
I think it's reasonable to go lower than that. I would, I would, I don't know, I, I, I think the Harriets are suggesting three eighteens for it, right? Which is a sixth. You're, you're willing to pay a sixth of your bill for the month?
On the excess, we pay the average for the month, but on the excess amount.
On top of the, under the ordinary pay or something?
No, we'll probably end up paying
So what, what, what is that amount that you're proposing?
I think the excess, we figured was about a hundred and fifty dollars a day, which is what the leak seemed to be running at. So that'd be four hundred and fifty dollars on top of our normal water bill.
So you're, you would like your bill reduced to like five hundred, five fifty or something, but you're asking the council? And Kevin suggested three thousand. I mean, you know, really, I mean, we have to consider, you know, Vicky is a lawyer. I mean, we could be paying the three thousand dollars to our city attorney to represent us and, 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 and action here.
God have mercy. Don't make suggestions.
I, I, it sounds to me like they have a pretty good case if they wanted to pursue it. So I, I would recommend that we go with like twelve hundred.
So a motion to reduce the bill to twelve hundred dollars, the remaining bill, by Revolinsky. Is there a second? Seeing no second, we'll declare the motion failed. Is there an alternative motion?
I completely don't agree with what you just said. So I'm just going on the record by saying you and I respectfully disagree.
Returning with this, at some point.
I was gonna make a motion, but go ahead.
I, State vote. I respect Vicky's comments about the legalities on this, and you've got moral issues, you've got political issues, and you've got legal issues. Right now, I was the state that had what's called comparative fault. And without conceding any fault, if this were in court, you'd have to have the Harriets establish that at least fifty-one percent of culpability in this case was the city's. Couple of phone calls, considering the other things that the Harriets could have done, and that the private lines, their responsibility, I don't think they'd ever make the fifty-one percent, to stand up frankly. If you don't have fifty-one percent, and you look at this like insurance companies do, and our own city insurer, ICAP, would probably look at it this way, is you then look at, can you do something to settle this short of fifty-one percent rather than paying lawyers to go have a fight about it for you in a forum? And so about anything up to half of this that you could settle it for with the Harriets, in my perspective, would be a win-win. You avoid litigation and you do something without making concessions on culpability. That's all I wanted to mention, is that comparative fault is what would apply here. And frankly, there's things like going on a trip for two weeks and so forth that figure into it as far as would some people do that after they fixed it? Would some people do it before and that sort of thing? But these are issues that you throw in as far as your, your affirmative defenses and things if you're actually in litigation. And that's not what we're trying to do here tonight, I don't think, we're trying to get something settled with some people. So that's my thought.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, I think we've heard from everyone that we need to hear from at this point, so let's
Can I make my
Recommendation from the council, motion from the council?
So I would move that we reduce the thirty-six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents to twenty-five hundred dollars payable over two years at no interest.
I'll second that.
Motion by Silvers, second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
No.
Boyer?
I feel like I should abstain, because I'm good friends with the Harriets. I hate to.
Hamilton?
No.
Revolinsky?
What's it called again?
It's three, it's three, two, one.
Three to one?
Three, three yes, two no, and one abstain.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Kevin, maybe we can work out the other
The ways, yes, we will, we're working on it right now to identify what's actually been happening.
Okay, Pilchers, you're up.
You don't have an appeal, do you?
Is there a, are there, I'm sorry, you, you don't have a, a request before the council at this time? All right, so just, we'll have a report then from the
The report from the Utilities Committee
I thought that might be, I thought that might be good news, given what happened, so.
The report from the Utilities Committee meeting of the nineteenth included Mr. Pilcher coming and expressing a desire to have nine hundred dollars in compensation for a water line connection, or sewer connection, excuse me, from a home that the Pilchers own on Monroe, which is near the sewer line reconstruction project that we just approved is finalized tonight on Second Street. During the course of the construction, it was found that the Pilchers' home came across and made a Y connection with a neighbor's sewer line, and then both of their, both sewers went into the existing sewer out there. That is considered a stacked connection, and stacked connections are not allowable by ordinance here in the city of Fairfield, so it would be considered an illegal connection to the sewer system. There is no sewer that runs across Monroe, so when, when the review of all the properties along Second Street was done to find out where their laterals came in, the home that the Pilchers own was not smoke-tested with that. It was outside of the scope area of the project, and only during the project was it found to be such. The Pilchers took on the task of redoing the sewer connection in a proper manner. The bill was, I believe it was thirty-six hundred dollars?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine hundred total, okay. But nine hundred of that would have been a link from the tap on the new sewer main out to a reasonable distance of lateral, which was being done by other homes along Second Street. With the scope of that project, a new Y, new Y connection was put into the sanitary sewer, and a piece of lateral ran from there to, I would say approximately the backside of the sidewalk. When, when the numbers were worked out, it averaged about six hundred and seventy dollars per home along Seventh Street, or Second, that people were compensated or given a lateral, a new lateral away from the new sewer. Looking at that and looking at the bill for nine hundred dollars that the Pilchers had submitted, the committee had determined that it would be a good idea to allow them at least the average amount of, of lineal foot or price per lineal foot, as we did all the other homeowners along that project, even though their home didn't face the project street and wasn't smoked during the testing to find out which sewers went which direction. So the committee recommended compensating them six hundred and seventy dollars of the nine hundred dollars, and I believe the Pilchers agreed to that. And we moved on from there.
Let's make it six hundred and eighty.
The, the six hundred, and to be determined amount, Your Honor, would be, would be returned to the Pilchers through credits, utility credits. So I just wanted to point that out to council. I neglected to say that in the subcommittee meeting, I forgot to, but
Well, yeah, you did.
It was, I think, I had assumed that it was assumed, but I wanted to, I did want to make that clear.
No, I'm happy with the decision, I just thought in the spirit of tonight, we could throw a little bit more on. I'm glad you, you are happy with the results. Thank you, Darren. And we don't, there, there is, is there any action necessary on that request?
No, I don't think there's any action necessary unless the council deems that there is.
No, I think it's, that's, was agreed upon at the staff level, that's fine. Next move on, is there a property committee report?
Yes, there is. We met tonight before this meeting, discussed two properties that are disrepair or nuisance properties. I reported on one of them two months ago. We had a property at two oh sixth West Adams owned by Doug Barker. We had met that night, he attended that meeting. We had discussed resolutions and ways he could come in compliance with our ordinances in repairing his property as it should be. There were bad door, where coons were going in and out of the house, there were broken windows, the yard's been grown up, the glass all over the yard. He, in the meeting, he was given two months to make repairs, but was told to start the next day, and he was gonna put a new door in the next day, was told to be in touch, contact with Scott Vaughn, reference the project, return calls, letters. None of that was done, nothing was done on the property until a day or two ago. Today, sorry, today. There was a new door put in today. There were some storm windows put over, some broken windows, the broken windows are still behind the storm windows. The yard was finally, the weeds were knocked down mostly. The glass is still laying in the yard, a lot of windows are still broken, the house is still in disrepair. He's been given, actually, it's been gone for eight months to repair this property. He has been cited by Chief Vaughn for the nuisance, but we need to look further into action on this property. I advise Chief Vaughn to get in touch with Mr. Morrissey and Kevin and discuss what our options would be to move forward on this property, to do something with it. We also had three neighbors that were at the meeting tonight, spoke on, you know, the, the coons going in and out the doors, the broken glass, the tall weeds, unattract, or attracting vermin to the property, bringing the neighborhood down in general by the looks of it, so. That was our, our motion on that.
Thanks. Obviously, there's no one living in this home.
There is none.
And is it, is, is he aware that it's a candidate for, for
Yes, he is.
Yeah, okay. Demolition, okay.
We also met on four oh one North Court property, Jeff Northridge owns that property. The property was a, the house had been torn down, but the hole left in the ground, the debris left laying there, the trees, the weeds growing up. Mr. Northridge did attend the meeting, he reported at the meeting, the hole as of today was half-filled in, a lot of the debris was moved. It would be filled in completely tomorrow by Roger Drish of Drish Escavation, and that the weeds and trees would be taken down. He too was cited into court, actually goes to court tomorrow on the property, and was told to meet with Chief Vaughn, and he was given two weeks to finish the project up.
Okay.
And that was it.
Okay, thank you. So these will, these will proceed, Scott, based on working with our city attorney to get out the necessary letters of, of notice about our next steps? Thank you. Thanks for the report, Tony. Kevin, will there be a report on the Amherst subdivision?
I just wanted to say that I'm still working on that contract, and I'll be delivering that to John hopefully by the end of this week for his review, and Tracy's as well gonna be looking over that contract, so that's where we're at right now. And I, of course, we won't be bringing that forward until we've completed these other two processes, so.
Great. Thank you very much. If there is any other business before the council, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
By Hamilton?
Can I give a quiet zone update first?
Oh.
It's my favorite thing to talk about. Real quick.
Let's, let's get a second on the adjournment first, and we'll give you
You guys.
Second by Revolinsky. Quiet zone update.
B Street is open and working on court, they got that really bad part torn out and re-poured over the weekend, and an FRA rep is coming to town tomorrow because he can't travel in October, and he's gonna kind of do a pre, pre-construction review. He's gonna review what we have done so far, and I think he's gonna say, "Keep up the good work." Hit it.
I think that's good. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.